Can you go to that gavel? The cost is $150.
Oh, man. I don't think I'll do it. I'm not much of a gala kind of guy. Oh, man. Sylvia, are we ready? It's the first time I get to do the gavel, so I'm not sure if it's even loud enough to... All right. Good evening, everybody. It is 6 o'clock, and I would like to call to order this meeting of the Fountain City Council, June 22nd, 2021, at 6:00 PM. And then we'll have everybody stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And roll call, please, Miss Hough.
Mayor Ortega, Mayor Pro Tem Lauer.
Here.
Councilmember Thompson. I can't find the right button. It's been a while here. Councilmember Estes.
Here.
Councilmember Applegate.
Here.
Councilmember Geek, Councilmember Duncan.
Here.
Five members present. Mayor Ortega and Councilmember Geek did notify staff of their absence this evening.
All right. Before we get into the next agenda item, which is presentations, I'd like to call for a moment of silence. As everybody's probably aware, there was some violence over the weekend and into yesterday. And I'd like to call for a moment of silence in respect for the folks who were injured and the one who lost their life in the Juneteenth celebration, and then also for the folks in our Veta, especially Officer Beasley. If we could just do a moment of silence now, please. Okay, thank you. And you know, I know Mayor Ortega's not here to say this, but he and I share this sentiment, and frankly, we are becoming more and more disturbed at the number of times we are having to ask for moments of silence, and more and more disturbed by what seems to be a growing sense around the country that human life is devoid of any value, and just... I don't know what's going on to cause this. I've got some theories based on my own spiritual background, but I'm not going to get into that, obviously. But just if you are of a mind to do thoughts or prayers or something like that, if you could please offer those up to call for a change in the heart of the nation, so that we stop having to do situations like a moment of silence or another peace officer being escorted down the street in a deceased situation, I'd appreciate that. So then, before we get to our present, the scheduled presentation, we have a special guest in the audience tonight, our new state representative, Ms. Mary Bradfield, and I'm really excited to have her be here to come up and introduce herself and talk about her first session as our state rep.
Good question. Do I use the microphone, and can I turn around and talk to everybody?
Uh, yes and yes.
Yes and yes, okay.
If you'd like to, we can borrow a microphone, so you can address anybody.
Yeah, and if it would make it easier, we can get one of the handhelds for you.
Yeah, let's just do that. You can borrow mine.
Good evening, and thank you so much for allowing me just a few minutes. I am the new model of Representative Lois Landgraf, and I have, didn't want to tell you that. I bring greetings from her, and I am very appreciative of all the great advice that she gave me before I went up to Denver. I'm not here to give you an overlook of what my five months was like, but I do want to just give you a little bit of information about one of the bills that this year will impact each one of us in one way or another. And if you choose to read the bill, it is like 190 pages. It's very long. Speed reading is a skill that I wish I had. It is Senate Bill 260. It is the sustainability of the transportation system. Now, this bill, we should be about transportation. It should be about roads, bridges, and tunnels. However, the sponsors for this bill feel very strongly that in some way or another, we need to change transportation in Colorado, and that we need to get rid of our gas guzzlers and diesel engines, and so this bill has a lot of influence on the electric vehicle enterprise. So, there are four new enterprises that will be starting this year at some point. There will be an additional fee on gasoline and diesel, and it'll be about two cents a gallon, and that's on top of the tax that we already pay. That money, if it's gasoline, will be used for road usage. If it's diesel, it's, the money will be used for bridges and tunnels. Now, this will begin at some point this year, and it will run for 10 years. Another fee that will be having an enterprise is a retail delivery fee. Now, if you have ordered anything from Amazon, and it comes to your home, from now on, there will be a fee attached to it that will go to the state government. I don't know how much that fee is going to be, but it's, 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 of course, you're going to pay for it because the delivery service will just, you know, move the cost on to each one of us. So I want you to be aware that that's, that's coming down the pike. And then there's a passenger's ride fee. So if you are a person who uses any transportation, like a group bus or Lyft or Uber, there will be an additional fee for the use of these transportation, and that will be starting at some point this year. And the last new enterprise with a fee is the electric motor vehicle registration. And that'll be a $50 fee if you have electric vehicle, and then it will also be $50, as I understand it, from there on out every year. The transportation bill was enormous. It was over $5 billion, but that $5 billion is not all from Colorado taxpayers. Some of it is federal stimulus dollars, and once they're gone, they're gone. You know, they're, it's not a sustaining fund. I tried very hard to go back to the bill and the fiscal note to see exactly how much of this $5-plus billion will be worked for roads and bridges and tunnels, and I could never saw an exact number. I just remember what I heard. And so it looks like 190 million are for roads, bridges, and tunnels. Now, that's not for a year. That's over the period of several years. If you know anything about road construction, I'm afraid $190 million doesn't go very far down the road. So, there are other enterprises that are created or modified that may or may not have fees attached to them, or the fees that I just mentioned, those four new ones, are part of these enterprises too. And one of them is the Community Access Enterprise. Now, this will support the adoption of electric vehicles, and there will provide incentives and support for electric vehicles, and it will include charging stations across the state. A second enterprise is the Clean Fleet Enterprise, and this is an incentive for state government, local governments, private individuals, private companies to modify their fleet to be electric vehicles. And there'll be a lot of money that will go that way. A third enterprise that really doesn't have a fee attached to it, I just want you to know about it, is the Non-Atainment Area Air Pollution Mitigation Exchange. This is a project that is funded, and it seeks to minimize traffic or have that traffic be directly involved in non-polluting vehicles, and that will be funded with lots of money. There is a State Bridge Enterprise, and that has been around for some time, and it is going to complete the surface transportation and state projects for tunnels. And since we don't have any tunnels down here, I thought I would just share that with you. I have no idea how much money. This, this bill was well thought out, well drafted, well conceived, and it went through because the other side has more votes than my side does, and I feel that if we're going to be informed citizens, we kind of need to know the good, the bad, and the ugly, and this might fit all three categories. I'll let you decide. Thank you so much. Appreciate your time.
Wow, thank you, Representative Bradfield. That was, yeah, I kind of followed that bill a little bit and called at least 20 different people to voice opposition to most of that. I'm one who just doesn't like additional fees and sneaking taxes through under the guise of a fee, and then sneaking those taxes through under the guise of a fee when it is specifically driven, no pun intended, to reach a certain agenda, so... Thank you for that information, and appreciate you coming out. Okay, now we'll move on to a presentation from El Paso County Public Health with an update briefing on COVID-19. Looks like Mr. Trilch.
Yes, good evening, Mayor Pro Tem, members of council, and the public. We are honored this evening to be joined by a few representatives of El Paso County Public Health. This evening, we have Deanne Reiberg, the Deputy Director, Fadi Yukana from the Office of Data and Analysis, and Michelle Hewitt, the Public Information Officer. They're going to provide an update to all of us on the COVID-19 situation here in the county.
Thank you, and good evening. I'm Deanne Reiberg, and I'm the Deputy Director at El Paso County Public Health. At Public Health, part of our COVID-19 response activities, we are visiting various municipalities across El Paso County to provide an update related to our COVID-19 activities, and it's my honor to be here with you this evening to provide that update, as well as to provide you with an update related to some of our activities out of our El Paso County Public Health South Building that you all have been a tremendous supporter of and that we are very pleased to have as a location-serving Southern El Paso County. So before we go into our updates, though, I'd like to just take a moment and again express my appreciation for the support that we've received from the Fountain City Council, as well as the mayor, certainly Todd Evans, and Mayor Ortega as well in both the COVID response and public health activities, both preceding the pandemic and during the pandemic. And also, your city council member, Sam Geek, also serves on our Board of Health, so appreciate both his support and that of Loheinos Gonzalez in both representing residents of the city of Fountain, as well as serving on our Board of Health. And the first item that we will focus on in our COVID-19 response update is on our vaccination efforts. And it's remarkable to think back about where we have come in the last year and a half approximately with our first case of COVID being reported in El Paso County in March 2020. Certainly, we've gone through a lot of ebbs and flows in our response since that time, entering into the pandemic with very few tools at our disposal aside from social distancing, restricting how we engage in the community to prevent the spread of COVID-19. But as we closed out 2020, we had the opportunity to finally have a deployable intervention with our first approved vaccines available, and since that time, we have been very focused on making sure that residents of El Paso County have the opportunity to be protected against COVID-19, as well as to obtain vaccination. And that will be what we focus on for our COVID-19 update, and with that, I'd invite my colleague Fadi to come up and join me. Fadi is one of our epidemiologists at El Paso County, and he'll be providing a data briefing for you regarding progress both in El Paso County and in the city of Fountain as it relates to our vaccine efforts.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Fadi. I'm an epidemiologist, and I deal with numbers. I'm a data geek, and I'll be going through a few numbers and hopefully answer some questions at the very end. Before we get into the numbers, I just want to point out that sometimes we, especially us, get bogged down with percentages, this many percent, this percent, that percent, and we want to point out that we, the interpretation from that should not be a binary fail and pass. The fact is that half a million, more than half a million doses have been administered in El Paso County. More than 300,000 people have been vaccinated, and more than a quarter million people have been fully vaccinated. Last June, the headlines were about the trials of the vaccine and how well they're going, and now we're talking about half a million, a quarter million, and 300,000 people, just an incredible number. Just with any vaccine campaign, you have an initial spike as people rush to the doors, and then you have a bit of a flattening and a downward. Right now, we are experiencing a decrease in the number of new people coming to get vaccinated, and the reason for that is because there's just less people to get vaccinated, but people are still coming in, and we're still continuing to see those numbers. Next slide, please. El Paso County sort of plays in that lower-to-middle pack when it comes to other large counties in Colorado. You have Boulder, Jefferson, and Denver leading the pack above that 70% mark. There is a national and a state goal that revolves around July 4th, and it looks like majority of the counties in Colorado will not meet that goal. The goal difference, if we're talking about the national goal or the state goal, but they both, both have a minimum of 70% vaccinated. We're fortunate here in El Paso County because we have a strong relationship with our federal partners, and they feed us information every week, so we're able to add their aggregate numbers to what we read from the state. So with that, we're at 58%. That will be a little bit higher percentage than what you see elsewhere because elsewhere only relies on state data. With that, we're on 50%, so I just wanted to point out that very important difference. Next slide, please. We are seeing a correlation between counties that have a higher vaccination rates and a lower incidence. Good news is that El Paso's incidence and positivity is the lowest we've seen since late September, early October in 2020. That's an incredible feat, and we want to drive that down as much as possible. Cautionary news, we're still higher than the other nine counties, and we are seeing a correlation between lower vaccination rates and higher incidence. Next slide, please. I wanted to drill down a little bit on age decades, and the reason for that is because there's a bunch of people in that 20 to 29 and 30 to 39, which can dominate the denominator. The 60 to 69, 70 to 79, and 80-plus, those three decades have all been vaccinated with at least 75%. That's an incredible feat. As you know, COVID has an increased risk as you increase with age decade, and the fact that the 60, 69, 70, 79, and 80-plus have all been vaccinated at least 75% is an incredible number. Then we have the 40 to 49 and 50 to 59 breaching that 50%. That's why I wanted to mention that, because the 20, 29, and 30 to 39 have so many people in there that the number of unvaccinated is going to dominate the denominator and drive down the percentage. So it's important for us to look at it by age decade. Next slide, please. Oh, thank you. Drilling down on the ZIP code relevancy here, 80817, historically, there's been close to 3,000 detected cases in that ZIP code, and recently, within the last 14 days, there've been around 44 cases. That's a conservative measure. Typically, that number is probably a little bit higher, and the reason for that is twofold. The undetected cases, that's somebody getting it and not testing, or not testing positive, and someone who gets it gets tested, but we don't have that ZIP code to tie it to that number. So detected cases, around 3,000. Vaccination rates, that ZIP code is responsible for 30% of its population being vaccinated. It's a little bit of a different percentage than what I provided before, and the reason for that is because we don't have age demographic per ZIP code. That type of granularity is difficult to obtain. So what we do instead is we look at the entire population. Obviously, if you have kids that are 11 or younger, they're not going to be eligible, but they're included in that percentage. So in order to compare it to El Paso, the overall county population, we're at 42%. Yes?
So considering that we have, if you could back up, please, considering that we have such a high military population here and federal employees, is that included in that number of the ZIP code?
Not that number, but it's included in the overall number, and thank you for bringing that. That's a very important caveat. In addition to not having age demographic with the ZIP codes, we definitely don't have ZIP code data with federal partners. We don't have that level of granularity. What they do is they provide us weekly aggregates, so we're only able to bump it up to the overall number. So that number is a huge conservative number when it comes to that ZIP code, because we don't have that granularity into the federal numbers.
So our average could be much higher?
Much higher, yeah, yeah. Could be closer to the average of El Paso. It could be higher than that. It just, it's, it's tough for us to know that without signing a lot of documents that take a lot of time to get those data agreements.
Thank you.
Yep.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
None of the numbers include the people who have had it and are now have natural immunity. Do we know anything about that group, and how do we judge that group when there's so many people that had no symptoms and didn't bother to even go get tested? How do we know how close we really are to herd immunity?
That's a, that's a billion-dollar question. Usually, the formula that we follow is the community immunity is either a large proportion is vaccinated and the natural immunity. Natural immunity spectrum has moved over time. Most recent literature suggests it's three months, so it's not a lifelong immunity, and it's not...
That is. Depends who you listen to.
It depends on your health. It depends on your age as well. So it's constantly moving, and we're, we're constantly following that literature, but it is a two-part formula, vaccinated or natural immunity.
Yeah, they're telling people that have had it not to get vaccinated now because they have lifelong immunity. That's been all over the place, so it depends on who you listen to.
For sure, yeah, and that's been consistent with the whole experience of COVID. It's a plethora of information.
Thank you.
That's all the data points I wanted to point out. I'll be happy to answer any other questions. Sorry, don't be my back.
Any other questions from council?
Thank you.
Do we, do we know what the percentages of people that work at Fort Carson could potentially have been vaccinated, but yet live in the city of Fountain, not on base? Do we have any idea what that number could be?
I just sent a note to the Garrison to see if we can just get what the total number of vaccinated on Fort Carson is, just so we have that. I don't think they have it down though to who's living on base.
I know it's not an accurate number, but...
I have it now. So Fort Carson's reporting 63.8% with the first shot and 52% completed with both shots.
Okay, but we don't know what the percentage is of those people that live within the city of Fountain. Okay.
Their personnel on base.
Okay, thank you.
And then I just wanted to provide a few brief highlights regarding our new location here in the city of Fountain. As we look at our vaccination efforts, more than 13,000 people have been served out of our new location with more than 20,000 doses since we held our first clinic at the Fountain location on February 19th. And we have had tremendous support from the city of Fountain to make this possible, not only in the setup of the building to make sure that it's accessible and available via transportation for people to arrive at that location, but also I would be very remiss if I didn't acknowledge the tremendous support we've received as well from Chief Maxson and the Fountain City Fire Department when we started holding these... When we started holding these vaccination clinics, one of the critical things to be able to assure in order to do a mass vaccination event is the safety of the participants. And as you may be aware, generally with the COVID vaccine, individuals are asked to observe an observation period of 15 to 30 minutes for any adverse events related to the vaccination. And what allowed us to open up as early as we did and provide mass vaccinations at that site was the tremendous support from the city of Fountain and the fire department to have EMS on-site to be able to support those efforts and respond appropriately while we worked out more long-term contracting relationships so that we could have that on-site on an ongoing basis. So thank you again as well for that tremendous support and for making that vaccination clinic possible. And then, next slide, please. I also wanted to briefly highlight some of the mobile vaccination efforts that have been occurring. We know that the academic year that just ended was incredibly disrupted for the schools and incredibly challenging. One of the things that we want to be able to support in public health is vaccinating as many of the eligible high schoolers and middle schoolers as possible so that we have better protection for our schools going into the fall and a better chance at a routine school year. And with that, we've partnered with Fountain Fort Carson High School and Middle School to provide mobile vaccinations, and more than 450 people have received 918 doses through those efforts as well. Next slide, please. And then briefly, our future efforts. The vision for our Fountain location certainly stemmed from our COVID response and recovery efforts, but also with the vision to bring more services to support the public health of the city of Fountain. So along with that, we anticipate having expanded availability for some core public health services. These include our Women, Infants, and Children Nutritional Program, bringing a broad spectrum of immunizations to that location as well, our Nurse Family Partnership Program, which serves first-time mothers and provides them with support, and also our Fountain Valley Communities, the Care Program, which is a youth-focused substance use prevention program. We're also working with community partners. We want to be a hub of prevention services for the community and partner with others to bring additional resources that can be brought to bear to improve public health and co-locate those services in that building. So we hope to be able to come back and provide you with more information as those agreements are in place and we have that information ready to share. And then also, with our new location, we have the ability to have a community room available for community meetings and bringing forward community partners to work on issues that may impact the city of Fountain, and we're looking forward to having that resource available as well and bringing more partners into that space. And those are the updates that we have for you this evening related to our COVID response as well as our location at El Paso County Public Health South. If you have any additional questions, I'd be happy to try and answer those for you.
Any further questions from council?
Just one question. The services that you provide at the Fountain location are full capacity. They don't have to go to another location or anything? Or like with WIC?
Correct. For a number of years, we've had a WIC location, a team that's dedicated to serve the Fountain community, and with this expanded space, we've been able to relocate those services fully to that building.
Well, I can tell you, several of us were there for the February 19th vaccination clinic and had a chance to go around the building and tour some of the facilities, and it is impressive, the amount of services you're going to be able to provide from that location. So I'm really, really excited about the partnership, and thank you very much.
Thank you for that, and we look forward to having you back at our facility as we get more services on board so that you can come and see those developments as well. And again, Todd and Scott Trainer have been just a tremendous support in setting up all of those, so thank you for that as well.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem?
Yes.
I got another note from Fort Carson on the subject. So it said 63% of their soldiers and families live off-post, and they're at 91% occupancy, and they're on-base housing. So you take the numbers there, they're about 50% fully vaccinated, and 60, a little over 60% of them live off-post.
And I'm sitting here wanting to nerd out and ch-chunk the math down and resist, resist, Greg, resist. Okay. Thanks so much for the update, and with that, we'll move on to item 4B, Board Commission Committee Appointments. There are none tonight, so we'll move on to item 5, City Council Agenda Request and Announcements, starting with our Ms. Duncan.
Good evening, everyone. I had the opportunity to speak at the Juneteenth activities that took place in Colorado Springs at the America, the Beautiful Park. It was a great event, so I hope for next year that Fountain has a program just as good as that program that they had. It was three days. We had a lot of other city council from city council. We had our county commissioner there. So again, that was a great event, and hopefully, we can do the same here in Fountain next year.
Thank you. Ms. Rep. G.
I don't have anything tonight.
All right, Ms. Estes.
Okay, a few things. There is a next round of the PFAS testing happening in the community, and they will be beginning recruiting people that would like to do that. This is a testing through, it's through, under the CDC, but it's being run by Colorado University School of Public Health. And if you're interested in finding out about that more, the website is www.pfas-fvc.org or at www.co-scope, S-C-O-P-E, dot org. And they are going to be actively recruiting for that, and this will, round will include kids. So they're looking to recruit 300 kids in the community. And so if you're interested in that, please let us know. The testing site will be here in Fountain. It will be down near the United Business Bank. Their office will be there. So if you want any more information, please let me know. The next one is the Fountain Valley Historical Society and Museum will be opening this Saturday. So our first time opening since basically 2020. So we will be running on Saturdays from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. or by appointment. The next one is, I sit on the El Paso County Community Development Advisory Board, and we have COVID funds that are available to nonprofits that are looking for ways to get some more grant money. And for those funds, the opening will be July 6th through August 6th. And if you want information, look at the El Paso County website, and they will go to the Community Development Advisory Board page, and they'll tell you what's eligible and what's not on that. And that's all I have.
Thank you very much. John, can we get those links put on the city website?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. And Ms. Thompson?
Yeah, last week, I attended a ribbon-cutting ceremony for the new Pregnancy Center that went into the where WIC used to be on Whitefield Boulevard. Beautiful building, beautifully remodeled, hoping to serve a lot of families through there. They do offer sonograms for people who need that. They also offer counseling, and they will work with people up to two years. And they offer also STD testing one time a year and can work with you on that too if you have a need for that. I had no idea they did that there, so learned something new. So it's a great facility. If you can stop by, support them, or if you need their services, they are there for you to walk alongside you. I went and ran out to Hanover Days, and that was a fun event, that good tractor pull they had out there, but boy, it was hot and the wind came up. Does that sound like Hanover? And then CML had their annual business meeting where we elected new board members and changed the bylaws a little bit. And then today, through CML, I attended an electric vehicle webinar talking about some of the things that are going to be implemented on the bill that Representative Bradfield was referring to, some of the federal dollars that are going to be coming down from that, and how we as a community can be prepared for when those dollars become available so that we are in the driving seat of what's going on in our community and how it's going to happen. So I have another seminar on that next week, learn some more about that. But if they're going to collect the fees, we might as well make sure that some of them come back to our community. So, thank you.
Thank you. And I don't have anything special other than Fountain Creek Watershed District is at it again. I had to, I had to count on Ms. Estes to fill in as my alternate for last month's board meeting due to a personnel situation at work that I was part of handling. And while I did that, they managed to sneak through some changes to the scoring criteria on the projects so that even though our projects were rated highly and are listed in the top 10, those scoring criteria again bump us out of consideration when it comes to actual money. But Mr. Skorman from Colorado Springs snuck in the phrase in the motion that the criteria could be revisited at any time, and we plan on doing that. If not this coming Friday, then at next month's board meeting where my patience with that board is beginning to run beyond thin, frankly. They are counting on us to be a partner, and they're about to drop the news that everybody is going to be asked for a 50% increase in their member contribution, member government contribution, which would take us from $8,000 plus our in-kind contribution to $12,000 plus dollars and a bunch of additional in-kind contribution, which frankly is unacceptable if they're going to continue to push our critical projects off the list at every possible conceivable opportunity. So... And then we'll be pushing for at least a two mil levy, which I don't believe is fair to us. The way the district was created in state law back in the day, there's no possibility unless we can get some changes made with our representative here in the building, I'll say that. Unless we can get some changes made before that mil levy goes up to the voters, the way the district was created, there's no way to separate any specific municipality. It's the totality of El Paso County voters and Pueblo voters together, or Pueblo County voters together. And if it passes with 50% plus one, then the tax goes into effect. So we would not have, the only other option we have unless we can get that particular statute changed, and I'm more than happy to sit down and start helping construct some language for that. But our only other option is just to heavily promote that we need some projects done in El Paso County and make our voters aware, since we outnumber Pueblo County voters three to one, we need to make our voters aware that if we don't get any projects above the Pueblo County line, we're going to be paying money ad infinitum for no good reason. And I don't believe that's fair or acceptable. So the first option I'm going to try is to sit down with Senator Heisey and Representative Bradfield, try to construct some changes to the statute and see if we can get that pushed through to at least give us an out as a city. And then otherwise, we'll have to apply some political pressure to get our project done as a flagship project for El Paso County, which could then show the voters that board is actually serious about doing the right thing. So aside from my frustration with that board, I have nothing else tonight. So we'll move on now to public to be heard. This is where citizens may address the council on items that are not on our agenda. Council may not be able to provide an immediate answer, but will direct staff to follow up. Out of respect for council and the others in attendance, we ask you to please limit your comments to three minutes or less. And when I came up to the dais, I didn't see any cards. So I'll follow Mayor Ortega's tradition and ask, even without cards, if there's anyone in the public that would like to make a comment. Mr. Linder.
Al Linder, REA Road. First, I, it's been a while since I've been here, but my representative's sitting up here, and I have to say, how are you? I haven't seen you since you've been elected. How are you? You know, I've been thinking of you guys and this country, and thank you for bringing a little bit of it up, violence with police officers and what's going on in the country. And you know, I look at you guys, especially you and you. I look up to you. You're, you're the peers. You're the people that these kids look up to. And I was wondering why I don't hear anything of speech of what's going on with my country, with the flag, with everything that you know. You're a Colonel. You're a Colonel. There's other military people in here that I respect with the utmost. But I'm pissed. I watch my country being destroyed, and I just want to know why I don't hear more talk about what's going on in my country in this room? Because this room is where politics, or whatever you want to call it, starts. It's too bad that we have a president and vice president of the United States who are treasonous, and you all know it. You military people know what treason is, and you know those people are. Why isn't anything being done? Police officers getting executed left and right? We just saw two people get dragged out of a car in Chicago, a man and a woman, just shot right there in front of us. You all see it. Why do we tolerate that? Why does the police departments of this whole country tolerate their people being killed? Where are they? Where's the cojones to stand up the spine to do something about it? Because I respect you guys so freaking much. I'm just ticked, and I gotta say these things. I know it has nothing to do with the city of Fountain, but it does. What is wrong with these politicians? This lady right here I just met, she's my new representative for the state. I hear Lois Landgraf. Well, Lois Landgraf means crap to me. You go drive down these freaking roads, you go down 85, you got freaking holes like this. And you talk about fees and giving us all this crap that you want up there. Politicians are worthless. And now I'm getting ready for a Merrill, a mayor election in this community, and I'm starting to shake. Well, that's about all I have to say tonight, bud. I'm really disturbed. And on all this talk that you people talk about, whatever, you just made your comments, and you made your comments, and these people, the COVID people, where are they? They walked out of here. I wanted to say something to them, because I don't believe a freaking word they said. And we're all going to find out in a few years what the truth is. You all, they crap all over you. Just remember, I respect you. I love you guys. I'm behind you 100%. But these, the military people, we gotta do something, because we're the only ones that are going to do something in this country or for this country.
Thank you, Mr. Linder, for your passion. Yep, yep. And seeing no more public to be heard, we'll move on to consent. Nope. Are these regarding things that are not on the agenda?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Please identify yourself for the record.
John Moore, I'm at 6925 Village Meadows Drive. My question was really for the public health and kind of for yourself. If we're talking public health in general, they gave some great numbers. That's kind of why I come, I wanted to hear what they had to say. But something they didn't address that I was really hoping is, what is our current death? You know, in these numbers that they said, we have new cases, yes. I have several friends that got COVID. They said they had colds that were worth, but it's addressed here as a pandemic and very dangerous. And now we're saying we're pushing these vaccines. Okay, well, I also have two friends, one with Parkinson's-like cerebral palsy, Bell's palsy, 60 years old, perfectly healthy, got the shot, and now she can't speak. Her whole side of her face and left side's gone. So if we're going to talk public health, I would have loved to see those numbers in here. You know, how many did actually die out of the 600,000, right? We got 44 new cases. Did we have somebody die in those cases? Or were they mildly sick? How many were in critical care? Or were they mildly sick? How many were in critical care? For me, public health decisions have to have that kind of data, that kind of information. And if you're going to mandate vaccines to, in order to come into a public forum or have to be masked, how many of those vaccines that we were given had adverse reactions? You know, if they're going to mandate that my daughter goes to school down here and has to have a mask or a vaccine, I want to know how many in our community are being sick by these vaccines also. Because, again, I'm personally affected with friends that are. And that's all I have, is, would they give their data, great. But as a data analyst, that told me nothing for public health, and that's all I wanted to address.
Thank you, and probably reach out to them and get, get those, those numbers.
And all that data. They do have their, the El Paso County Public Health website does have, uh, a data dashboard that does provide all of the data relative to, uh, to deaths, uh, as well. The, um, uh, federal websites do have the tracking of the adverse reactions to the vaccines and everything. So there is a lot out there, but we can certainly help you find it if you, if you'd like.
Yep. Yes, sir. And just please identify yourself for the record.
My name's Travis Simino, I live at eighteen fifteen River Drive here in Fountain. And, uh, yeah, the data's only good if you believe it. I mean, people could make up a Excel spreadsheet, but anyway, I wasn't going to talk about that. I was going to talk about, um, this, these. Um, so, I don't know what is going on with the Code Compliance Office, um, here at the Fountain PD, but these are tickets that I have received just in the past six months. I don't know if Code Compliance has a hard-on for me or what. They have tagged me for everything from a little bit of trash in my yard to threatening to tow my car out of my driveway because I was a month over my registration. They pinged me for having, uh, an Airbnb in my primary residence. Uh, they pinged me for having a tenant in my primary residence. I'm not running a, uh, it's not an investment property, it's not an investment property. It is my primary residence on the mortgage. And I was forced to shut down my Airbnb until I paid them off, so I shut it down. And I think that it's very anti-business of the City of Fountain to require somebody who has sacrificed his living space to makes a little bit of extra money, you know, to make ends meet, you know, the cost of living here in El Paso County is skyrocketing. And, you know, I have a hard time paying the mortgage sometimes, everybody does. But, uh, yeah, I, I shouldn't have to pay off the, uh, the Code Compliance Office just to make a few extra bucks to pay my mortgage, uh, otherwise I'm out on the street. And so, I tried filing a complaint against this, uh, officer, uh, Cornella, but, uh, her supervisor, Officer Flores, kind of pushed aside. It was a, it was a, uh, typical case of, oh, we, uh, investigate ourselves and find nothing wrong. So, uh, that's why I came to you, esteemed council, and, uh, seeing if I can get any kind of restitution for this.
So what I'll do, sir, is I'll give you my, my card with my number and contact info. So let's set up an appointment, you can come in and we'll sit down and go over them, and we can talk about your options. Okay.
Thank you. Travis Simino, C.I.M.I.N.O.
Thanks, Tom.
Sir, that public health thing that you were talking about, there's a meeting in the morning at eight-thirty at the Public Health Office, and they'll give you all that information at that meeting.
Thanks, Mr. Key. Man, nice to see you. Okay, one last call following Mayor Ortega's tradition, and this might be dangerous, but one last call for anyone from the public to be heard. Okay, seeing nobody jumping up, uh, at the moment. Move on to item seven, our consent agenda. All items listed under consent agenda are considered to be routine and approved with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests, in which case the item may be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately at the discretion of the council. We have items A, B, C, and D for consideration. What would be the will of the council? Uh, Mr. Applegate?
Would approve consent agenda.
And Mr. Key?
I second.
That motion and a second to approve the consent agenda, uh, please vote.
Not set.
Nope, let's try again. There we go.
Six, yes, motion carried.
All right, with that, we'll move on to item eight, old business. Uh, item eight, A, an update and discussion of the single hauler concept, Mr. Evans and Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, sir, appreciate that. And if, if council doesn't mind, since Troy and I are gonna, are gonna kind of do this jointly, um, we're gonna go ahead and just remain seated, if that's okay, and not, not head up to the podium if everybody's okay with that. So, as we stayed on the agenda, this is, and as we've worked through this, this is a discussion. There's been no action taken on the single hauler concept. So what I'd like to do is just take everyone through the little bit of the history for those, uh, that aren't aware, what our original goals were, kind of the steps that we've taken. And then at the end of this, uh, give a recommendation from us, um, on, on whether we move forward as a staff and, and kind of take just the direction. There doesn't need to be a vote on this, since it is just a discussion, but what the recommendation of the council will be. So to take everyone back, this, the original concept of this came out of our discussions, um, with our roadway focus group, all the way back in twenty-eighteen. And during that timeframe, uh, that group, uh, again, for those that don't know, are made up from, uh, six citizens that are two in each of three wards, so that we ensure that the entire city is represented. And basically, we sat down and they understand, because at that point, we were having, uh, frequent meetings, um, every month, if not every other month. And basically, during those meetings, we go over the ins and outs and in-depth, all the details of the issues that we have with our roads right now. And as you receive complaints coming in from your constituents, um, those are the folks that really have spent the time, uh, to understand what the issues are, going all the way back to engineering standards that were allowed when the roads were built, uh, going through the challenges that we have with funding, um, understanding the increase in construction costs, um, understanding that when the Moving Fountain Forward initiative was passed, um, the language in that, um, uh, taxation, that was a challenge, i.e. waiting for those funds to come in before projects could start, and while the construction costs went up after the recession, that really didn't keep up with those rising costs. So that's a group that's really educated and really spends their volunteer time, uh, to get in-depth on what's going on. And then yearly, one of the most important things we do with them is we sit down and, with the resurfacing portion of Moving Fountain Forward, we determine throughout the city, um, what are appropriate roads to utilize that resurfacing monies for. And just a reminder to everyone, those funds, about four to five hundred thousand a year just for resurfacing. So they're primarily used on, on chip seals and those type of resurfacing to just buy us more years on the current roads that we have. And because we have such a minimal amount to do resurfacing, maintenance until last year, when you increased that by about fifty thousand, that was averaging right at a hundred and fifty thousand a year for maintenance on, or right around a hundred and eight miles of road. So, when we get in-depth with them, they have to make some hard choices on what roads. Um, we do use that resurfacing in, in their individual, uh, wards throughout the city, so they make some tough decisions. So as we brainstorm big picture and what we could try to do as a city to improve our roads in small steps, they came up with multiple ideas, and one of those that we discussed was going to a single hauler. So that concept would be to take the seven companies that we know we have right now, I think it might have grown by one or two since we started this. We might be at eight, uh, at this point. Um, but to take those, um, identify the pros and the cons, and then kind of do community, uh, outreach and find out kind of what the people were feeling, as if that's a good idea. So when we moved forward into twenty-nineteen, what we did was we spent our time having community meetings. And between twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen, we had six different roads meetings, two in each ward throughout the city. And we threw this concept out to the folks that attended those meetings. And as we know from those of us that, that conduct community meetings, you don't have a ton of folks that show up. But those that do are usually pretty proactive about whatever topic that is. So we got very good feedback from the folks that attended those meetings. Um, so we moved forward into twenty-nineteen, and at that point, Troy put together a group, uh, of staff members to include John Trilch and one of the fellows that we had, and they put out an official RFP so that we could, when we were presenting to the public, we could give them numbers. Would this save money? Is this a good idea? What would that RFP look like and change in their services, and what could we expect? So they did that, and we got those numbers back. And once we did that, we completed a feasibility study. Troy, uh, and some interns that he had put the majority of work into that, so we appreciate them doing that. And it kind of addressed what those cost savings looked like, what the pros and cons would be, uh, lessons learned from some other, uh, municipalities that went to this, lessons learned on some that didn't, and, and why they didn't. So we put those together, and once we felt comfortable to reach out to the community, we had one large meeting where, where city, uh, chambers was full. Um, you could tell it was a topic that, and, and many of you attended that meeting. But you could, you could see that many people were, were emotional, both on both sides. So we thought we were getting the good engagement, and then all of a sudden, we got hit with the pandemic. So everything came to a screeching halt. And that's something that you can't, you can't predict that that's going to happen. So when that happened, basically, we came to a halt, and we waited until our technology was, was in place, that we thought we could reach out and get a good percentage of people virtually. So we stepped forward with that. So we had some very good, uh, virtual meetings, we had some in-person. Um, so we felt we had a good, um, kind of sampling of those that will get involved. Also, what we did was, we monitored kind of what went on on social media, not in all the sites. We didn't get down into the, the Nextdoor sites and those type of things, but through our Facebook, uh, John helped us put up a blog where folks could interact on our city website. Uh, so through that, through our website, and then as well as the Fountain Valley News, uh, um, social media, we kind of monitored what was going on. So as we did that, we always kept in mind, and we've kept repeating what our initial goals were. And what those were, were to see if this concept would actually save money for the citizens, while also them being able to keep their choice. Because we heard that loud and clear in that first meeting that we had, uh, that that was a priority for a lot of folks. Uh, we wanted to see if there was a way we could help our streets by reducing the amount of heavy truck traffic that was, that was on our streets. Um, people can argue the different, um, studies that have been done. Um, but common sense is, the more heavy trucks you have on our roads, many of them, which weren't constructed appropriately, we're seeing that damage on our roads. So that, that's kind of what our baseline was, and that was our goals. So as we did that, and we actually got those, those RFP numbers in hand, um, uh, we were able to come back and show savings. But one of the things we didn't expect, again, was what we're seeing right now in the market, um, in general, being the higher gasoline prices that we're seeing right now, um, the issues with CDL drivers, um, that we're starting to see impact even our gas, um, deliveries. Um, uh, we're having issues right now, major issues with, with maintaining our CDL positions, such as streets, such as our transit drivers. Um, and just being able to predict what that's going to look like a year from now, we just, we just can't do. So when we took a look at those things and, um, we looked at the feedback, and I'll read you just, uh, some of the samplings, just a couple, so that you can kind of get a idea. I tried to pick two for pro and two for con that kind of summarized what we saw from the majority and heard from our community meetings. One of the positives or one of the pros was, please go to a single hauler. There is a trash truck on my street at least once or twice every day. This is just wearing out the roads faster. One of the cons that kind of summarized what we heard from, from quite a few folks, please, no single hauler trash service. My family loves our current company that offers a very low rate for multiple cans plus recycling picked up weekly. This changed the single hauler would impact my family's budget negatively, our ability to recycle weekly, and have a trash servant that meets our trash and recycling needs. Please do not switch to a single hauler trash system. Another one of the pros, we don't need fourteen different trash trucks on our street every week. More pollution and safety concerns, I vote for the single hauler system. Another one of the negatives, the pandemic has given me, quote, "the opportunity to be home during the week." Honestly didn't know so many garbage trucks roam the neighborhood on a daily basis. That being said, I still must agree with those who are against the single hauler plan. I like the right to choose, I want to pick up the trash. Uh, I have a good relationship with my garbage man, I want him to continue being my garbage man. Now, one thing I didn't realize was how many people thought so highly of their garbage man. Um, I don't care, I want it to pick up on the right day and for the cheapest amount, and if they do, I'm good. But some folks take it pretty passionately. So one of the things that we saw, and, and remember, those data folks would say, hey, the way we did this unofficial survey, it's not a good, you know, we have thirty thousand-plus residents. So there's no way we can guarantee that all the folks that we looked at live in the City of Fountain. There's no guarantee that somebody didn't say, could set up some fake accounts. But rather than going out and paying a survey company or doing something else, we did it as unofficial as we could, and we pulled that. So the end result is, uh, when we put the numbers together, it was basically two to one against going to the single hauler. So one thing I can say from, from the staff side of things, we also did some things of Ms. Rosa, who everybody knows Rosa, uh, she did some contacting of another municipality who's gone to a single hauler to see what the customer service, um, was like, to see how they reacted. And she just called, not as, not as Rosa McCormick who runs the City of Fountain, because then she would have got the, the instant customer service that she's used to. She just called as Rosa McCormick citizen possibly moving into their city. And I can tell you, we weren't pleased with the customer service that she got. Um, it took them, it took them five days to get back to her. Um, she had to call multiple times and do multiple things. And, and on our end of things, from, from the city staff side of things, and I think everybody in this meeting knows this, that's not acceptable to us. That's not how we treat our citizens, that's not how we look to, or for our citizens to be treated. And that was prior to, now there's, there's reports coming out about one company that purchased another local company, and things aren't going well as well. So the one thing we struggle with, especially with the pandemic would, that hit, and something that we saw and we heard from folks, um, as we did this, is everything is in, everything in business is timing. And as we try to run the city as a business, but also with an open heart to deal with our citizens' needs, um, we don't think at this point it is good timing, um, to do a government mandated program. Our citizens are coming out of twelve to eighteen months of government mandates and telling people what they have to do and what they can and can't do. So, we don't believe this is good timing to move forward with this, that would be our recommendation. But I say that with the caveat of this. I don't buy into folks that say, hey, we said two years ago, we don't want to do something, you as a staff should never look at it again. That's our job. So when we have any citizen groups, and a lot of times individual citizens, that come forward with us with a concept, it's our job to vet it. It's our job to go through what we did, to find out the pros and cons and vet different ideas. So I'll never, you'll never hear me say, just because two people don't like the idea of something, that we won't do our job and follow through, uh, with the responsibilities of vetting it to see if it is a benefit for our citizens. So, that's a summary, and I'll turn it over to Troy. But, but again, our recommendation, because this is just a discussion, is that at this point, we don't move forward with it, but that doesn't mean in the future, the timing may change and the dynamics may change, that we need to take a look at it again. That could be years down the road, that could be, and that's why I like what Troy put together with the feasibility study, because this was discussed, I don't remember when, ten, twelve years ago in the city. Um, but nobody captured that data, nobody captured basically this. So we will make sure that we update that feasibility study. So, if it gets opened up, if that would be the desire of council at the time, we have things that we can go back to and open that door. Um, but we just don't feel right now is the right time to mandate any type of, this type of government, uh, project.
Yeah, I, I think that's a, that's a great, uh, explanation and summary, um, even helpful for me, because we've been doing this for a while. Um, you know, and, and, uh, you, I look up at the, at the board and the, the priorities that the council has set, and it, you know, one of them is transportation infrastructure. And that's a, that's a priority for, I know, the council and, uh, for our citizens, and it's a priority for staff. And, and so, um, it, it's, it's important for us, and, and we're all passionate about finding ways to improve our transportation infrastructure. And this was, this was an idea of a way to do that. And, um, and, and I'll say it like this, we pursued that idea passionately. Um, and I think that we, that we proposed and researched, um, the best, uh, possible way in which Fountain and this community, we could do it. uh, possible way in which Fountain and this community, we could do it. Um, and I, and I believe that the sort of the product that we presented and we got feedback on from our community, we really kind of got to know the best case scenario for, for this, for this community. And, and even with that, we were sort of met with this two to one against. And, and at the end of the day, um, we all serve the citizens here. And, and we serve this community. And, um, whether the timing's not right, or whether, uh, you know, the timing will ever be right for the, for the people in this community that, that really believe in the freedom of choice and, and, um, kind of that freedom from government intervention. Um, that's, that's a lot of the feedback that we got. And at the end of the day, um, we're going to continue to passionately pursue ideas to, uh, improve transportation infrastructure. Um, but, but at the end of the day, we, we, we serve the citizens and, and that's the feedback that we got. Um, there was, there was certainly many that supported the idea. Um, but, but at the end of the day, I think, you know, I think it's responsible for us and that's kind of the recommendation that we're making is, is to kind of, uh, take, take the lead from the citizen feedback that we got, the majority of it. Um, and, and say this is, this is probably not the right time for this idea. And, you know, maybe, maybe a time in the future, but, but not right now. Um, is, is kind of the message that, that we wanted to communicate back to the council.
So Mayor Pro Tem, that's where we're at. We'll happy to answer any questions or give any other information we can.
So there's questions from Council, Mr. Applegate.
So in this survey that you took, what were the numbers?
Um, and what we did was we, we tried to go through, because the same per, people would make multiple comments on multiple. So we tried to just give each individual the count of one, even if they put a negative comment on all three sites. So what we ended up with, and we've had some more that have come in since then. So we're probably over 100 at this point. But it was 61 not in favor, 32 in favor. So just about two to one.
In a town of 32,000 people.
Correct.
Yeah, that's not much of a survey.
And that, that's kind of what Todd was saying. I think
Unofficial.
The statisticians would tell you that that's not a, uh, that's not a representative sample. That you, you can't sort of rely on that to represent the entire city. Um, but the reality too, is this more engagement that we've gotten on just about anything else.
Yeah.
So
Well, yeah, you've got, you've got You've got your 60 people that are always engaged. So that's, that's a given. What I'm curious about, what are we going to do about the roads now? Are we just going to let them go as is and just let the trucks keep deteriorating them? Is that
Well, this is what, and, and this is what we need, the overwhelming message of even all of, and you know these efforts that the roadway focus group has made, the tax initiative failed. Um, even the numbers that we have come forward. A lot of what we need is for those folks that are passionate about these, we need them to be more vocal. We need to get them to get more involved. Um, so that it's not the same folks just saying no about any idea that comes up. So, you know, the roads are going to be the same situation. But I want to make sure everybody understands. Cause this was one thing we ran into in our communication with the, with the, the community. Part of this was going to be the maintenance fee that was, we had proposed go directly to the roads. But some of the feedback was, we expected, uh, the totality of those, those fees to be $300,000 to $400,000 a year. But still some of the perception was, okay, well, if we're paying that fee, then our roads should be fixed. And, and, uh, Mary brought this up earlier. And if you're in the road business, you understand that $300,000 to $400,000 a year will not fix a quarter of a mile of one of those 108 miles. So the, the roadway focus group ran into this with the initiative as well. Our citizens are going to have to understand very soon and very strong that we are going to have to come up with a additional funding mechanism to start to rebuild our roads. Cause a lot of folks would, would ask us, well, if we do this and we're paying that fee on the single hauler, then our roads are going to be fixed, right? And we had to say absolutely not, not even close. Um, that won't even, that will take care of one block of curb and gutter, uh, at $300,000. So we're going to keep coming up with ideas. But until politically and until we have a, a political kind of consistent group come together to say, we need to support and we need to move forward with a large initiative that's going to go directly to our roads, we're not in any hope of these piecemeal things that we're trying to do to make any difference on the road issues that we have right now and that are going to be 10 times worse in five, 10 years. And that's, that's just the transparency and the truth of the matter. Yeah, it's going to take something. The folks that say, well, you know, if, and I tell folks during our community meetings, I say, you can fire me tomorrow and get rid of my salary. And that won't chip seal, again, 100 yards of a road. That would take huge, if we wanted to use our current budgets, we would have to go to police and fire and cut each of their budgets in half. And still that wouldn't repair the, the roads in Heritage Neighborhood in one year. So that's where the hard decisions, and, and again, I repeat this very passionately. This is going on at the federal level. This is going on at the state level. This is going on at the local level. We have ignored these problems for too long, but they are now on our doorstep. And, and Bob is, is going to talk about it later and we all know how passionate Bob gets about it. But if we don't come up with something, our roads and our, and especially in our neighborhoods, we've got another, I'm going to send you out some information. We're attempting to get another grant for some of our main thoroughfares. But what we hear from the public is they say, well, why don't you go out and find grants to fix our neighborhood roads? They're not eligible. We can look at some main thoroughfares, which we're doing through PPACG and some others. But those neighborhoods are going to take people committing financial, uh, the financial ability to go in and fix those, which isn't going to happen with this little maintenance fee we were talking about for this.
Yeah, the maintenance fee is not the important part. The important part was to keep so many trucks off of our roads.
Yeah.
And that we're not going to do, so.
You bet. And we are still a big proponent if we can figure out how to do that.
That would turn off the faucet and give us time enough to mop up the flood. So Any other comments or questions from council?
Man out here had a question.
Yeah, I was going to have to call him up. Please come to the mic.
I was just wondering, I was, you know, just spitballing ideas. I'm a, a federal construction project manager for Shaiam Mountain Air Force Station. So, uh, senior engineer over there. And, uh, just wondering, have you guys floated the idea of maybe a tax incentive for construction companies? Maybe offer them a, uh, you know, talk with your, your state representatives or something like that about a, I don't know, a tax break for a paving company? And that sort of thing, uh, you know, that, the carrot's always better than the stick.
Sure, sure. We haven't, but use my info I just gave you. And let's talk about it. Yeah, we're open to all ideas. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, last call. Anybody else from council or republic?
Just a big thanks to Todd and Troy for all the work you put into this. We got some good information.
You bet. Thank you.
You guys did an enormous amount of work and I appreciate it.
You bet.
Very much. Okay, with that, we'll move on to item nine, new business. Item nine A, consideration of items removed from consent. There were none, so we'll move to nine B. Resolution 21 dash 027, a resolution requesting authorization to accept $99,999.00 in CDOT revitalizing Main Streets. COVID recovery grant funding on behalf of Main Street and Ohio Avenue intersection, public improvement project. So here, this is Ms. Bailey and Ms. Williams.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, council and public. We appreciate time to bring this forth to you tonight. Um, I will not reiterate the lengthy introduction you already provided. Um, but that is basically the scope of what's being presented formally tonight. Um, under COVID recovery measures with the state of Colorado, CDOT got creative in identifying Main Street, uh, funding for critical infrastructure project needs. So, uh, next slide, please. Um, we were in front of you basically about two and a half months ago when we procured the first grant of funding, which was $50,000. And when I say we, this is a team collaborative effort between Economic Development, Fountain Utilities, Public Works Division, as well as external agencies of El Paso County, CDBG Grant Funds, um, and the Fountain Urban Renewal Authority. So as Todd and Troy have already kind of set the plane for me tonight, um, not one initiative or one agency can solve the needs of infrastructure. It has to be a collaborative approach. And this is a perfect project that is addressing that creativity. So as I said, when we were previously in front of you in January, we received the first issuance of funding of $50,000. Tonight, we are in front of you regarding the June, uh, um, awardance of funding, which is the $99,999. Um, on behalf of the public improvements projects of intersections of Main Street and Ohio Avenue. Next slide, please. So Project Primus, it's basically a holistic four-point intersection improvement project that is addressing the public safety, health, mobility and diversity of accessibility within the epicenter of our town center, which is literally outside our front door tonight, where we sit. Both grants, grant one and grant two, under the CDOT submission process, does adhere to each of the five tasks identified here. So nothing is changed or different between the two grant, uh, submissions and awardance of funds on behalf of these improvement areas. Next slide. So what does design scope look like? Um, as you can see, you have a base aerial map as the foundation of this image, overlaid with the design schematics done, um, in the green, in the yellow and in the red accent features of this design. In the upper northwest corner, you have 101 North Main, which is the City Utilities Customer Service Center. Upper northeast corner, you have 102 North Main, which is Fures Woodman Hall, 1905 historic property renovation project underway. Lower southeast is where we sit tonight, City Hall. And then the catty corner to that is really your focus of small businesses as well as your Fountain Fort Carson School District in that South Main Street corridor of activity. So next slide, please. What do these intersection improvements really focus on? Uh, first of all, the Ohio Avenue parallel parking remains intact and as is nothing on Ohio Avenue actually will be, um, touched in the scope of work. Utilities Customer Service Center will remain fully accessible. However, it will be a construction zone. So there will be awareness to those ratepayers and addressing how they will access that property as well during any needs regarding utilities. The seven new public streetlight improvements are highly needed in this corridor. Once dusk approaches us each evening, it becomes a very, very dark, unsafe public safety corridor. And we are very, um, pleased to bring that to the forefront regarding this funding we've received. In addition, I have to read, I did not bring my glasses tonight, I apologize. Um, Utilities Filities, uh, building actually gains on-street ADA accessibility compliance. Right now, um, anywhere on, from getting on the street to off the street to the sidewalk into that customer service facility is not adequately adhering to ADA compliance and is restricting some access for some of those, um, mobility needs in our community. What that means in the redesigned scope is we are reducing, um, the parking on that northwest quadrant by two slots to adequately accommodate the ADA access needs of that corner. Woodman Hall is able to retain its historic entryway. So currently, and because of how the property was built in 1905, up upon its boundary line, we were actually going to have to curtail and close off the historic entryway, that property through our revitalization efforts. However, in that design schematic we identified in the greenscape, you are actually gaining one new parking space because we are removing this dysfunctional access drive that impedes the sidewalk today. We are actually also adding, um, to ADA compliance of the entire frontage of that sidewalk area for access. By adding those improvements, we are also reducing just one of the parking slots on that streetscape today. Um, and then lastly, under CDOT's parameters, they are really, really emphasizing parklets, which is a configuration of drop-off and pickup zones, ease of access for commuter patterns. And that is being a feature or an element incorporated in this new design scope under that northeast corner. Lastly, I will say, the parallel parking to the North Main Street neighborhood corridor is harmonious with the neighborhood. So what it does is it actually alerts the vehicular traffic patterns that they need to slow down because they are entering a neighborhood congestion area and not be so quickly to pass through as you would maybe in a commercial corridor. In addition, um, again, I should have brought my glasses tonight. I fully apologize. The parallel parking does accommodate the, uh, fleet size usage in this corridor as well as stormwater drainage, uh, that we've been able to document in this corridor. So that's really a synopsis of the improvements under acceptance of this additional $99,999 of CDOT funding on behalf of this public improvement. Next slide, please. So what does all this talk mean? So this is a visual scape of really what we would embody in this corridor under those four-point intersection improvements. As you can see, you're creating a greater entrance for pedestrians to enter this intersection, which is highly congested and a speed zone for vehicular traffic patterns. It also does allow for better diversity of mobility of needs. Again, we have a school district. We have families with strollers. We have four daycare centers in this corridor. You are creating some impediments in public safety parameters by not encouraging the improvements as we are portraying tonight in this landscape. Next slide, please. So with that, I am more than glad to address any questions, as well as Brandy Williams of our Public Works Division. And we also do have Ms. Justine with us tonight from our Wilson and Co. Transit Engineering Team that has helped us through this process. More than glad to, please, three slides back, Yolanda, please. Oh, you want that one? Okay. She's there, she's good there, I guess. Thank you.
That is a really nice, was any questions from, any questions from council?
It's all based on funding, just like, uh, everybody else at this table is, uh, trying to procure.
Mr. Applegate?
I'm super excited, oh, I'm sorry. I'm super excited. This is just something that we've been working on for years and years and years for this community. Lots of different visions and ideas that have come forth from the community, from, from the people who own businesses and live down here. And, um, to see this whole intersection finally moving forward, I'm, I'm super excited about it. Um, to see how the, it all just kind of plays out. But to, to get something moving along, I think is really going to be encouraging to the, the people in this end of town who sometimes get a little frustrated and say, everything happens on the mesa. And, um, we're going to be saying, not saying, not true now. Come on down and, and see the exciting stuff that we have, have going on downtown. And, um, always better when you get a grant for it, any, and any money, right?
Yes. And, and thank you for those comments. The team does greatly appreciate that. Uh, I will rebuttal that comment with saying, under our placemaking initiative last year, that the, we actually resonated quite a bit of public engagement. And we gave a report out on that effort, I think, I believe last month, if I recall correctly. This was the number one intersection of importance from that public feedback.
Mr. Applegate?
Yeah, there's no more questions.
Let me check with the public. Any questions or comments from the public? Okay, seeing none. Uh, I need you to come up to the mic, please, sir.
I was just wondering if there's any plans to, uh, connect this with, uh, the potential Fountain Creek Trail that's nearby. I know, I know that there's a lot of neighborhoods that, uh, have trailheads, uh, that branch into that. Uh, and I know that, uh, there's also a collapsed section. I, I, I run that trail all the time. I got a 10K route that I do at least once a week on there. And, uh, you know, it'd be nice to pop in it down and have a bite to eat or something if there's enough commercial property there to do that sort of thing, but yeah.
Brandy, were you going to answer that?
Yes, I'll, I'll handle it. So that's actually going to be, um, more of an offshoot. We're working on the Front Range Trail right now and the route that it's going to take through town. And it'll come down Santa Fe and go over to Indiana. So this won't be part of the trail proper, but you'll be able to get from Santa Fe and Ohio over to this location.
I'll try this one more time. Okay, if no other questions or comments, what would be the will of council? Mr. Applegate?
Yeah, um, I move to approve Resolution 21 dash 027. Uh, resolution to authorize the acceptance of $99,999 to revitalize Main Street.
And Ms. Duncan?
I second.
Motion, and a second to approve Resolution 21 dash 027. Please vote.
Six yes, motion carried.
And I would like to contribute the other dollar, just a nice round number.
It's a, it's a CDOT criteria. It had to, funding in total had to remain under 150,000 in appropriations. Hence between grant one and grant two, that's how we got this anomaly of a number to present to you for acceptance tonight.
I was just saying, it sounds like a Price is Right bid.
Yeah.
I figure, I figured there had to be a specific reason for the omission of the dollar, but we could have gone up to 99 cents. Dead gummit.
Well, the project team thanks you for your support, uh, on behalf of this initiative. Thank you very much.
Thanks, awesome, I'm looking forward to it, thank you. So now we'll move on to item nine C. Authorization to three new police officer positions to the Fountain Public Safety Department Chief. the Fountain Public Safety Department Chief.
Good evening, everybody, Mayor Prottemp, City Council Citizens. It seems like there's been a lot of bad news tonight, so let's, let's do some good news. So, you got any good news?
Hopefully, we're getting new police officers.
Okay, so here's the good news, there's 58 men and women that serve in the, in the Police Department, there's 40 that serve in the Fire Department, and those young men and women are dedicated to our city. They dedicated, they could leave, they could go to El Paso County CSFD, they go to CSPD, and they could move tomorrow and make anywhere between 20 and $25,000 more a year, which is not insignificant. And they chose, they chose, they choose to stay here to serve this community because they want to be in Fountain. Fountain is a rich community, it has a military flavor, it has historical roots that are found in agricultural and all the good things that you would want in Colorado, and most importantly, they have a city, a city council, a command staff, a staff that we work with every day that supports their Police Department and Fire Department. And in today's world, that is probably what I tell them, and I firmly believe, the most valuable thing you can have for you as a police officer to serve today, because it is difficult. We talked about, about that a little bit tonight, the most recent report from Officer Beasley out of Barveta is he was targeted in an ambush-style attack and he was killed because he was wearing his uniform, seven miles from downtown Denver. So, you know, that happens more. We talked today, Todd, in our, in our meeting with the staff, Colorado right now ranks number six in all active shooter from a state level, it ranks in the top six and is number six across the country. So we talked about the training we want to do for City Hall and the workplace violence and the active shooter training, and the potential of looking at armed security for City Hall. You know, recently, we went and we dealt with an individual that we had taken a weapon from him, that he was in possession of illegally, and he came to City Hall, he threatened Scott Trainor multiple times, he showed up at the Police Department downtown at the District Attorneys, and here at City Hall in a flak vest, in a hardened flak vest. So, these are the types of individuals that we're dealing with right now in our society. It's almost the perfect storm that is congregated over a difficult political season, no matter which side of the fence you were on, coming out of COVID and the mental health challenges that affected all of us, right, whether they were financial, emotional, or psychological, those impacts are real, and we're seeing those things. El Paso County, and I'm proud of this, I'm, I'm a proud gun owner, we have a lot of guns in El Paso County, the problem with those guns is they get stolen out of unlocked vehicles across our county, and they end up in the hands of the people we don't want to have guns, and they're not afraid to use them today. Last year specifically in law enforcement, the respect from law enforcement, and, you know, it took a big hit, and we see that with the people we're dealing with today, they don't want to comply, that's part of the narrative, they don't want to comply to authority, and then there's a bad outcome, right? So that's the environment we're in, but, you know, we feel blessed to be here, we appreciate our community. Many times, people ask me what we can do, and, you know, those simple acts of kindness that happen so many times in our community of thanking a cop or buying them a cup of coffee, or they see you sitting in your patrol vehicle behind them at, you know, at Loaf and Jug or Taco Bell, and they're going to, you know, they're going to pay for your meal. Those things count, right, those things count, and we appreciate those things. Number two is all the prayer we can muster for our country and our first responders and our military, and just for our country and the heart of the country and the heart of the people. And thirdly, then, what we can do as, as officials and elected officials and, you know, heads of law enforcement agencies to run it in the best way possible. So, that brings us to our request tonight. Our request tonight is to gain your approval to immediately hire three police officers that will bring our staffing from where it sits at 48 to 51. We haven't addressed police staffing since 2008. In 2015, we had 45, and 2018, we brought the staffing to 48. We worked on the Fire Department. James, you know, I would tell you, you know, I am so proud of James and Chief Maxon and the leadership he's brought to the Fire Department, and, and the good news about the staffing for tonight is it's not going to affect the general fund, right, because we, we've heard of the challenges. Chief Maxon went out, used his experience, and got us a grant from Medicaid that's going to net the city $580,000. Our intent today is gain your approval to hire three police officers tonight, and in November, when the rest, when the money comes in, to hire the remaining three firefighters and EMT that James needs to run the third ambulance and to give him the resources. He, he is getting stretched at times almost as much as the Police Department is getting stretched, and we're very creative in how we manage that. I'd like to highlight all the, all the data tonight, please stand up, Ms. Wanda, I got a, I got a, well, yeah, okay, you can just throw your hands up. You know, i- if you don't know Wanda, she's a legend. She is probably one of the best gifts Todd ever gave to me was Wanda, and she has worked all of these statistics and all of this hard work, and she's our crime analyst, she is in this stuff every single day, and she's in it 10 hours a day, she works on the weekends, and I tell her to make sure you, you, you know, you take that money, she just wants to help the cops do their job the best way possible. So today, based on Wanda and Matt, Lieutenant Racine, who oversees that program, we do hundreds of extra patrol checks and traffic stops to protect our community by predictive analysis and using the intelligence to predict where the crime's going to happen, and we make sure we check it. That's how we've mitigated to this point that we haven't had a crime wave just overwhelm Fountain. Last summer, there was about an eight-week period where we had three shootings in an eight-week period that was significant concern, it was concern to the citizens, it was concern to you, it was a concern to me, and we worked those cases and we brought the victims justice. Today, based on the stats I'm going to show you, we almost see that level of violence almost in a two-week basis, so that, the, the game has changed, the heads of law enforcement, we, we talk once a month, Ms. Kimberly read an article, we're predicting, based on what we've seen, that this summer is probably going to be one of the busiest on records and one of the most violent. I would not bet against that, you know, we're going to go out there and we're going to do everything possible to keep our citizens safe. Most of our crime does not come from Fountain, it comes from Pueblo, over 50% of our felony crime, right? Another 25%, 30% happens in the counties, Security Whitefield, Colorado Springs, and Incorporated, and, you know, most of our violent offenders are not Fountain residents, right? That's a, a good news story, but we're in this corridor, right, along I-25, that Sharon, you know, there's a million people, 100,000 people moving a year into El Paso County somewhere, and the first slide that I would draw your attention to is Fort Carson. This, this, this anecdote frankly surprised me when I saw it. When I retired in 2014, we claimed that there was about 30,000 people on Fort Carson. But Fort Carson grew during that time, and today, in 2021, there is 71,961 people at Fort Carson, 57% of those people live off-base. A lot of those soldiers, as you go throughout the day, are in and out of Fountain, so it brings, you know, that increase has been huge, and those in, increase we felt that in our community, into our streets, into the speeders, on those individuals trying to get to work every day, all of the things that we've, you know, we've really tackled. Fountain population has grown at the same time to almost 31,000 people here today, and that depicts the, the growth of the Police Department from 20, from 45 to 48. Today's request would bring us to 40, 51. Our final request is in the 2022 budget to bring that strength up to 52. What's been significant, if you go down a little bit, is when we looked at the data provided by Wanda and Matt, in 2021, we have 18,690 calls for service. That includes the first three months that were, were abnormally low as we were coming out of COVID. So most of that increase has been in April and May, June's going to be another one, that has brought those calls for service to 18,000. Of those, 4,498 took two cops to handle it, right? When we're, we're dealing with the level of violence that we're talking about today, we don't send in a single officer, they need backup, they need their backup, they need time to slow it down, look at the information and make the best decisions they can, so that's been a really big push for us specifically this year. Of those 4,498, 1,774 took three cops or more. What that means when our minimum staffing is four, and I'm requesting to take that on the days and swings to go to five on each shift, is when we have a call like that, it wipes out potentially every cop we have in our city, right? And the fear has always been is when we have two of those calls that happen simultaneously, we can't get to them. The X request today and the one in 2022 will help us bring that minimum staffing on our days and our swing shifts to five, right? So if we have a call that takes three, we have another call that, that takes two, we want to have the resources to be able to do that. That's very important to us. Let's go up to, let's go up. So here's some more, more of a little bit of a deep dive on the data, because I think the data's important, right, because, to understand it. In May, we saw, in May, we saw the, the weekly calls for service jump by 230 on average. In April, we saw them jump to three, jump up a weekly average of 340. The cops want to work hard, and this is part of the problem, because if you look at a scale, you have the resources we have available, you have the calls for service, and then I think this is a very important thing. You have officer mental health and well-being and their commitment to do their job, Todd talked, we talked today, and Todd both, we both understand that the communities that are losing this battle, the cops are scared to be cops, right? Because they're overworked, they're underpaid, they don't feel supported, they're scared when they go out there and do their job if they make a mistake, and they don't want to do their job. That's what we're really at the heart of the matter trying to prevent, right? That they have the resources, they feel safe to go out there and do their job effectively. In the percentages over here, we saw, we looked at comparison at 45 to 48. In January, because of COVID, we didn't see very much of an uptick, it jumped to 17%, 9%, and here's what is really significant, and this is what I predict the summer's going to be like, it jumped 35% in April and 44% in May. And at some point on that sliding scale, when the resources stay the same and the workload is going to, you know, go up 40%, 50%, that's just a no-win situation, it's not attainable over time. There'll be a mistake, there'll be an officer hurt, you know, we have 57 today, we're almost at full strength, every other Police Department in the region is down 20, 30, 50% with no way to fix it, so that's what we're trying to prevent, because that would really make it a worst-case scenario. At the very bottom, you have, these are a highlight in the breakdown per years of calls for service that require two or more, and then Matt put in some data there at the top, our officers on average have at least 120 hours on vacation, and more than 30% of our sworn have the maximum allowed of 240 hours, because at some level, at the Patrol Division, they don't want to take a vacation because they don't want to leave their, their staff hanging, they don't want to leave their team down, and that will eventually bite us, and we'll pay a tax for that. So we want mentally balanced cops, right, post-traumatic stress, John and I started, really, the Army took a hard look at that in about 15 years ago in Iraq and Afghanistan, and really today now, in the last couple of years, is really where, you know, both for the firefighters and for the first responders, we really started paying attention to it. And I think here in Fountain, we were paying attention at six years ago, when I came from the Army, because I knew that was important, because there's not a lot of difference between being in combat in Iraq and being in a gunfight or being ambushed here, or the things that some of the calls you have to deal with. And we're seeing those on a more high-frequency basis. So, you know, we, we'd like your support, I think this is a, this is a good start, we'll look at the budget in 2022, we're very excited to bring on the firefighters towards the end of this year, this will be a big vote, we got to balance, all the other requests are important for our city, but, you know, it's my recommendation as a advocate for public safety, we don't want to lose our public safety department or our police officers, and we just appreciate your support tonight. So, if you have any other questions, I really would like to highlight, you know, James is the one that found this grant, and this is $620,000 we never had before, and, you know, I can't thank him enough, because we wouldn't be here tonight without that, and I'm very proud of him because of it. So, I've told all the cops that they need to thank their fire chief, and the fire chief is very humble and doesn't want to be thanked, but I want to recognize him tonight for his leadership and his ability to get this grant. We will go for another grant of Medicaid for next year, that's a new federal grant that's going to hit the market, that could also be a grant of 500,000 to 600,000. So, that certainly will help the Public Safety Department over time, we're certainly going to look at all those avenues that we can do to self-help, and then we understand the sensitivities where we got to ask the general fund to give us a little bit of help, but we appreciate your support, and if anyone has any questions, I'd like to answer them for you tonight.
Any questions from council?
So it's, right now, it's a federal grant, and it's, it's, it's on the books every year, and they calculate those numbers, Sharon, by our actual calls for service, so that was one of the things we really looked hard at, the Finance Department and Scott, we wanted to make sure they were comfortable, there is no way we can anticipate that those calls for service are going to drop based on the 1,500 homes that we know will be built, and the area will grow. James is running, his guys are running as hard as they can possibly run this summer, so those calls for service should stay consistent, my guess, and this is a pretty good guess, is they will rise, and maybe that grant next year is $700,000, but, you know, it should only stay the same or go up over time.
So this is a renewable grant every year?
Yes.
And based on calls of service, you feel comfortable that we'll be getting it renewed every year?
Yes.
And, okay, and then the backup plan, if for some reason the grant, say, a couple of years from now, we hopefully have a plan to absorb the cost of those officers into our budget.
Absolutely. You know, the other thing that I would just, you know, I was, I was talking about today, you know, we, we have the ability, as we've done with the Fire Department, Police Department over time, based on the city's budget and other priorities, you know, we have time to, you know, maybe during the winter months, not to hire a cop and bring them on, and let that position sit vacant for four or five months before we need them. You know, so we're going to work as good stewards with you as a city council to make sure we do everything possible to manage our budget and watch it closely and be a team player where we need to make smart decisions. So, there will be ways, you know, one of the best things Todd and Scott did, you know, seven years ago, was getting the South Academy Highlands. That secured really Wanda's position as a crime analyst, because we thought that was very important, which has turned out to be critical, and six additional officers. When Todd left as chief, our minimum manning was three, right? So, South Academy Highlands and the tax base was able to absorb that over time, and that was a blessing, Sharon, because we'd be, without that move, today, we'd be almost in entirely different circumstance, so hopefully that answered your question.
Without these officers coming on board, can you give us some idea of calls that have to be postponed, or people have to wait on things to happen? I mean, you know, you get in a car accident, it's frustrating, you know, you can't get a police report right away, but what other kind of calls for services have the potential?
So, you know, we have priority-one calls, everything in progress, guns, violence, you know, those are the calls everyone goes to and, and we bring them in. A type-two call could be a domestic violence, so let me give you a circumstance, I'm disgruntled with my ex-wife, I'm going to kick down her door, that's a tier-two call, and, and cops aren't going to go to that. There was a situation when I was talking to a large agency, regional partner to the north, over a weekend holiday, that officer was lieutenant in charge of the patrol shift in one of the subdivisions, and there were 61 calls pending. A lot of those calls were domestic violence, and a cop never made it at the end of that shift, so after 10 hours, those calls were still pending. That's the worst-case scenario of the circumstance we don't want to be in, right? Because all of those sliding scales directly reflect, you know, the Love Bank or Trust Bank that we talk about, that we have truly tried to, you know, build with our citizens over the last 10 years, which makes us a very unique community. So, you know, that's the, you know, that would be the, you know, the cost to pay for that.
It's a social cost.
Sure.
It's a social cost as well, it's an emotional cost.
Yes.
And on our officers, it's a, it's a chance of them getting burned out.
It is, it is very much so. You know, and I just want to thank you, you know, we have done so much good, helped, you know, our city, specifically, we added in for all first responders, we added in death benefits for their family members a couple of years ago when we found out through El Paso County that that was, there was a gap. You know, we did that for them, and, and last year, we provided it, I think of a cost of about $30,000 liability insurance to protect our police officers. As Mary knows, and I'll just highlight Mary, you know, sorry, you know, Mary certainly knows, and I want to thank her for her hard work up at the Legislature last year, this, the past year, because as you know, Sharon, Deetra, Troy, we talked about this, you know, weekly, we dodged a couple of horrible bills on law enforcement and our citizens by one vote, and I, I want to say thank you for that. I know those bills will be back next year, and we're going to have to be prepared to fight them as hard and smart as possible, and I want to publicly do recognize and thank you for your support to our community, so wanted to end on a little good news on that one, too, dear. Yep, yep, sorry, that was a bad time, my, my bad.
Just made a tiny little noise, and Chief picked right up on it.
Yeah, yeah, I felt, I felt the movement on my backside, Todd, you see that?
Situational awareness.
Situational awareness, I just got lucky. So, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna work real hard, we're gonna try and protect our cops, we're gonna try and get mentally balanced. Good news stories, you are, you know, most of you already met Officer Hulk, he's our therapy working dog, I think he came and saw you this week and was a big hit, and number two, next month, I'll be very happy and proud to introduce you to our, our, our new Beacon Team. She is in training, she's ready to go, she's completing her ride-along, she just went to crisis intervention training, which is a very great class we send all our cops to, so I'll introduce you to her next month, and that'll be a big difference, too, on our citizens' mental health. 90% of those calls that she will go on with her police officer escort, we don't take anybody to jail, and that's good, right? Our goal, and we're not going to out-arrest our way out of the problems that we have in our society, so if we can get people that help they need before the crisis, that's good, so we're excited for that. Yes, please.
Just to expand on this, and I think I did mention this a few weeks ago, but essentially where this money is coming from is, is from the federal government, it is coming through the state of Colorado to us, and essentially what this is, is there's a cost, that we did a complete business analysis on our ambulance operation. there's a cost that we did a complete business analysis on our ambulance operation. And there's a cost per transport for every one of those calls. And that includes capital expense for ambulances, fuel, personnel costs, everything. So we did a complete analysis on everything. And then based on that analysis, our cost, you know, we have a per-transport cost and in the federal government only reimburse X amount of dollars for Medicaid patients. We have a very high payer mix of Medicaid and Medicare here in this community. So this program is designed to, if we get five-hundred dollars on a fifteen-hundred-dollar ambulance bill, that it's, it's helping bridge that gap. Because our cost is far more than the reimbursement we get from the federal government for that ambulance. So that's where this is coming from. And then that's Medicaid. And then next year, we already have a line that there's probably going to be Medicare to, you know, fairly, um, you know, equal equivalent to that. And I just want to uh, recognize Captain Jared Cass, our EMS captain, who has really spearheaded this project and helped with this.
Do you want to talk about the ambulance funds and the billing switch?
So we, we switched um, ambulance billing uh, companies in our entire platform back in February. And today we kinda got the first uh, inclination as to how we're doing. And so far, our um, billing uh, revenue per transport has doubled. So that's very encouraging to us. So hopefully, I'm, I'm positive we'll stay on that track.
Thank you. Clap that one out right there.
Ms. Duncan?
I would just like to say, I've lived in my home uh, for sixteen years. And I'd like to say thank you, Chief Maxim. Um, from day one, you have been an asset to this community and to the staff here. And I, I can't, if I had ten thousand tongues, I couldn't thank you enough for your hard work that you do. In my neighborhood in the last month, and I can tell you in the last month, I've had an officer at a door, um, uh, that was uh, profusely um, apologizing because he was thirty minutes late to a call. You know, the, 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 the baby dialed nine-one-one, threw the phone in the planter, we couldn't find the phone. Here comes the officer, we didn't know why, we had police at the house. And he was just apologizing and we were, we felt so stupid because we didn't call the police, the baby did.
The baby did, the baby did it.
And you know, this is just hilarious how kids dial nine-one-one. And so, you know, and then we've, you know, we've had several right down the street, across, out of my door, domestic violence, mental health issues. This was just in the last month. Okay? I've had shootings right outside of the park where my son and kids in the neighborhood who I consider my children are playing every day. We've had the, the, the house next door to me and I don't know what was happening there. I don't know, I just know I, there were police everywhere and, and stuff growing out of the windows. I don't know what was going on. But you know, we've had this stuff going on. With just in the last month where I live. And I don't know what we would do without the police. So, you know, to say that we don't need the extra police, I, I, I don't, just by what I've said in the last month, what would we do? We need, we need the police, we need them, we need their support. I go out when I do see them and I tell them how much I appreciate them because I do. I am scary and I need the police. And I will call the police. And I tell them that I appreciate you and they tell me how much that they need you as citizens to tell them. So please, whenever you see a police officer, tell them how much you appreciate them. They really need your support and it helps so much.
Deitra, my son dialed nine-one-one too when he was a baby, but the phone was connected to the wall, so it couldn't go out the window. But we had no idea till they showed up at the door either. So it happens. Don't worry about it. It probably happens a lot more than we know, huh?
Okay, anybody from public? Mr. Rick?
Uh, Gordon Rick, uh, first, uh, thanks to Chief Ever and the young lady who provided all the data. It's convincing to me that we do need uh, these police officers. However, I would caution council, we've still got a fourth fire station out there that we're planning in the future. We're talking about needing to hire an additional twelve uh, firefighters to man that station. Four people, three shifts, so comes up with twelve. Even at half-staffing with six, you're talking about needing another five-hundred to six-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars just for staffing costs alone. Fully staffed, you're looking at between a million and a million and three for staff. Right as of last time I heard, we're gonna go to the public and say, we need a tax increase to pay for the firefighters for that station. You're going to be asked, hey, you got all this money here, why didn't you use it for Fire Station Four? If you're comfortable with your answer, go forward. Again, I think we need the officers, but we just need to be prepared to explain why we didn't start staffing Fire Station Four going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rick.
Is that even a possibility with this grant or is this grant very specific that it has to be used for staffing?
Well, this, this, these funds are essentially reimbursing us for costs that we've already made. And so there really are no restrictions on what this money is for.
But you have a plan, right? For that fire station, correct? You have a working plan?
Well, for Fire Station Four, uh, as that development over there on Link starts up, we do have the land that has been given to the city as part of that development. Um, but we need to come up with the money to build the fire station and then do the staffing.
But you're building the staffing now that we could potentially need to, to help man that?
We're, we are on that road to doing so, yes.
So you have a plan?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Geek?
Well, I think it should be noted too that uh, I agree with what you're saying as far as Fire Station Four, but whenever we're still worried about manning three stations, I'm not worried about the fourth station, but I know that we need the cops now. So to me, this is a no-brainer.
All right. Uh, what'd be the will of council? Oh man, it's a race. Uh, Ms. Estes?
I move to authorize the immediate addition of three new police officer positions in Fountain Police Department with initial funding to come through the departmental savings and long-term funding provided through Medicare/Medicaid reimbursements.
And Ms. Duncan?
I second.
Uh, motion and a second to, well, you heard the motion and the second, so. I don't want to repeat that entire incredibly long-winded statement, so. Motion and a second, please vote.
Six yes, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. And moving on to item nine D, resolution number twenty-one dash zero-two-eight. Resolution of the City Council of the City of Fountain, Colorado authorizing the hiring of Schmidt Construction to provide professional road maintenance on four projects throughout the city. Mr. McDonald?
Good evening, pro tem, city council and public. As stated before, I'm here tonight just to bring the contract forward for approval uh, for the road resurfacing projects that we have this year. Uh, we're looking at doing right now Mountain View Lane from Santa Fe to Clearview Drive. And that's kind of on the, the western side over in Zone One, what would be Zone One. Fontaine West, I'm sorry, Fontaine West is over on the west side, which is from Highway eighty-five to the end of the street, kinda where the Beckett Center and the new health building is. Uh, there's a lot of increased traffic over there. That road's been falling apart for a long time. And if we don't, if we don't resurface it soon, we'll have to rebuild it here in a few years. So, uh, we put that on the list this year. Uh, we have Jimmy Camp Road. We started Jimmy Camp Road a few years ago. Uh, we're looking to compute, complete it this year, especially with the hopeful addition of a traffic control signal at that intersection. We are seeing a lot more traffic on Jimmy Camp and throughout the city, but that is a major collector for us going through the city. So we'll finish that from Ohio down to Countryside where we started the resurfacing a few years ago. Uh, and then lastly, uh, Southmore Drive, uh, from Carson to the city limit is the last one. Uh, so we have that. Right now, we had, uh, again, we went through a bid process. And Schmidt Construction, who has been our uh, contractor now for the last two, two projects, two years, uh, they came in at the lowest bid. Uh, they've done a great job for us. They're the ones that we hired last year as an addition to the contract to rebuild Old Publa Road, uh, which is probably one of our, I think, one of our best rebuild projects that we've been able to, to afford based on funding contributed from the Ventana community and that building is the only reason we were able to do that. Uh, but I think it worked out great. So with that, uh, that's, that's the streets that we're looking to resurface. These are the mill and asphalt resurfacing. On the last city council, we had a consent agenda item for the chip seal projects that were gonna, that were gonna happen that time. They'll look like they're gonna come in, probably the second week of uh, July to do the chip seal. And I've got some pre-con meetings set up with Schmidt Construction to probably start mid to late July for the resurfacing. So I'm hoping, uh, I actually was sitting down and crunching some numbers tonight. Uh, based on talking to their project manager, we may have some salary or some funding savings with these projects. Uh, the, the total amount that we're asking for right now for tonight with a five percent contingency included, just in case there are some things, sometimes you never know what you're gonna get with the road until you start milling it. And then it falls apart and those prices increase to get that road resurfaced. So we always put a, try to put a five percent contingency in there in case we run into major issues. We're looking for an approval balance of uh, three-hundred-and-fifty-three thousand, two-hundred-and-eighty-nine dollars and thirty-two cents to complete these projects. Again, based on my discussions today and some crunching of some numbers, we may see some savings. If there are, we're coming up with a list of other small projects that we may be able to, may be able to do this year with some resurfacing. Uh, if we have enough savings, we'll just have to play it by ear and see what happens as this project goes along. Uh, but I'm developing a list now of some other priorities that we probably need to touch if we can get enough money saved to get those projects done. So that's what my request is for right now. And then I'll do, I know I've got about ten minutes, so um, after this is complete, barring any questions, I can, I can throw out some other information, some other things we're working on throughout the city. It's been a few months and I've been, since I've been able to talk to you.
Any questions from Ms. Thompson?
Thank you. Um, that Fontaine West is very busy.
It is.
Um, so how are we gonna keep the access open for the doctor's offices that are there? I mean, to get to the shopping center, you can obviously go up eighty-five and around, but the doctor's office is gonna be kind of a.
Just like any other, it won't be a total road closure. There'll of course be some traffic delays there, but uh, we'll work with the traffic control crews and the traffic control to make sure that they get access in there. Uh, they'll, there might be times when it might be a little congested. Uh, the milling part of it, when we mill those roadways out, as long as we don't run into any big issues that we've got to do any large digouts because of failed assholes, there's a few that I was up looking at today uh, that we may have to do a little more excess work on once we start milling a couple inches of that pavement off. But we will always maintain access for those businesses in that area.
And the um, curb and gutter there that's failing, that'll get repaired at the same time?
We already fixed it.
Oh, fantastic.
It's fixed. We finished that today, actually.
Okay, yeah, cause the, the water just loves to collect there in the winter.
We fixed that hole and then we, we're gonna go down before the milling starts and we'll go down and clean the end of the roadway. All the debris from eighty-five, eighty-sevens, uh, especially with the last few rainstorms, you can kinda see where all that debris ends up, especially on that roadway. And it ends up down the end. So every about, every two years, we have to get in there and clear that debris so that water will continue off the roadway. We'll make sure that gets cleaned up before we do any projects or any work on the road.
Right, yeah, cause that, that's a, that's a, and with the new health department there, of course, it's.
Absolutely.
Makes it even busier, right?
You bet.
Yep.
Yeah.
I'm supporting this, but I just want to state that I live on Mountain View and I'm getting no financial benefit from any of this, but I wish to be able to vote on these other projects as well. Just want to publicly disclose.
Yeah, all these projects come from a roadway focus group. I mean, I, I take a look at the roadways that we can save. You know, when we look at uh, roadway preservation and, and roadway maintenance, uh, we're at a point, of course, uh, in, in the roadway infrastructure of this city where there are a lot of roads in this city. I get calls, I average probably twenty-five or thirty calls a week on when are you gonna fix my street? And unfortunately, there's a lot of streets now in this city that I can't serve, I can't save anymore. We have to rebuild. Uh, based like Todd earlier talked about, uh, the way they were built twenty-five, thirty years ago, or sometimes less, uh, when they're already falling apart, uh, based on just poor, poor building techniques uh, that are failing now. So once a road gets to a certain point, we have to make a decision. We do what we can to put a Band-Aid on it, but we have to keep the roads, especially the, the collectors and the major roads going through the city. I have to make sure that I keep those roads open for public safety. And so these guys can get to where they need to go in one piece and they don't have to pull the car behind them or push it to get to the call for service. You know, we've got roads where we've broken suspensions uh, on our large fire trucks, or we've had to replace suspensions on those vehicles. Uh, so I mean, these roads, we are at a critical point in our infrastructure. The rain and the moisture that we've gotten early this year, although it was a blessing, it's a double-edged sword. Uh, because as much as we need the water, it, it, it quickly and, and, and greatly increases the rate of destruction of the roadways that are already falling apart. Once that water gets underneath that, that asphalt, it just does terrible things to the roadway. So, um, you know, we've got roads like, especially one of the latest roads that are really coming up are like Barn Owl. Barn Owl is a road that we annexed from the county a long time ago. Uh, we tried doing some skin patching on that road last year. It's only got about an inch and a half of asphalt on it. That's about four inches shy of what it should have. Uh, so once you put the trash trucks on it, once you put all the traffic on there, that road is just doomed for failure. And it's past the point now where I have to rebuild it. I've contacted actually our contractor on that one that we've used for the last year because of the reclamation that we don't know if it will work so well. And there is a base under that roadway that we can probably use. Uh, but it's about, they, they estimate about a hundred-and-ninety thousand dollars just to do that road from Jimmy Camp to Progress for just that small section of roadway, almost two-hundred thousand dollars. And it'll be more because that's just the asphalt portion of it. That road has no slope. It was built pretty much flat. Uh, so there are roads where, there are places on that roadway where the curb and gutter, they direct water towards each other. And that's why there's so much pooling on there, cause there's just no place for the water to go. So I've got to pull up the majority of the curb and gutter, so probably add another a hundred thousand dollars on top of that uh, to replace that, to be able to, to try to fix that roadway. So in reality, is that gonna happen anytime soon? Until we can figure out a funding source, it's just not gonna happen.
Mr. Geek?
Yes, is that um, that West Fontaine, is that parking lot for the health department gonna be fixed this, next week?
It is. Uh, we have it scheduled right now for the twenty-ninth, uh, which is that Tuesday?
Do that too?
No. Uh, A-one chip seal is gonna do the slurry, it's gonna be a slurry seal. So I've got the contractor ready to go on the twenty-ninth. We've contacted all the, the businesses in the area uh, to let them know that that will be closed on the twenty-ninth. The striping, we're hoping to get done the next day. Uh, having a little bit of issue with that, but we'll make it work.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions from council? If not, any questions from the public? Okay, seeing none, what would be the will of the council on this? Mr. Geek?
I make a motion to approve resolution number twenty-one dash zero-twenty-eight.
And Ms. Thompson?
I'll second that.
Uh, motion and a second for approval, please vote.
Six yes, motion carried.
And, uh, well, Mr. McDonald, since the next item on the agenda is correspondence comments and ex officio reports, would you like to use uh, this time to do the status update you were talking about?
We can do a little bit. I, I kinda started it a little bit, uh, but we could definitely go more in there. Um, you know, we look, and I know a lot of discussion this evening has been on critical infrastructure, not again, just through federal, state. But of course, you know, I'm, I'm uh, assigned to take care of the infrastructure of the city. Uh, and, and I can tell you, it is definitely frustrating. Uh, because again, I talk to citizens, again, a, a large part of my week now is I, I try to go out and talk to the citizens instead of just leaving a message on their phone uh, or, or talking to them over the phone because I understand their frustration. And I tell them all, nobody wants to fix these roads more than I do. Uh, because I receive all the complaints every week and I see, although they're looking at what's in front of their house as a failure, I'm looking at a failure citywide of our infrastructure. And I see now so much of, of how quickly and we're at that tipping point in, in most of the roadways in the city that uh, we're going to see a very quick and fast deterioration over the next few years that way, that may necessitate some roads like Barn Owl being turned back into a dirt road. Uh, un- unless, unless, exactly, unless we find a funding source. Uh, because based on four-hundred to five-hundred thousand dollars of overlay money that, that I receive a year and that, that we can. that, that I receive a year and that, that we can get a year, uh, when you look at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of that just to be able to build a small residential street like Barn Owl, we can't afford to dedicate those resources to a road like that. We have to keep the main roads open, so it's these neighborhood streets that suffer. Uh, and it's, it's the, it's the Cross Creeks, it's the Ancestors, it's the Heritage Neighborhoods that we're looking at probably somewhere around twenty million dollars right now to be able to fix those streets, because again, the way those streets were constructed, I can't, I can't overlay them, if I overlay them, I'm wasting taxpayer money. Uh, to do it properly, I have to dig them up, I've gotta dig out about three foot of clay that is underneath each one of those roads, because when they were built, they were graded smooth and they put it right on top of clay. So that's why most of those roadways look like a roller coaster, and we can go in and do a patch, and within six months, right next to the patch that we completed, is another failure. Uh, and it's.
And Bob, let me, let, let me just expand on that too. We hope, and Bob and I try to, we try to be very consistent when we talk to the folks that call in and make these complaints and different things, and I think something that, that, you know, again, we heard from that feedback when the initiative failed, that a lot of folks don't realize, is that those roads are, are negatively impact their home values. And as, even though we're seeing things exploding right now, when folks pull into some of those, we can use Heritage as an example, when they're driving down those streets and the road is in the condition that it is, we all know, and we can all make estimates of what that impacts their home values, but I guarantee it's in the tens of thousands of dollars, 'cause some folks will just keep driving, they won't stop and look at that road. So, you know, again, we live in neighborhoods, my, my road is starting to fail in my neighborhood, and that specifically touches them, that I don't think a lot of folks realize that. Um, so we hope when, when everybody's out talking to constituents and they get that, we're all consistent with saying, "Understand." A lot of folks we had when, when John did the survey, said that, yeah, they were okay with the condition of our roads, because Bob's doing such a great job, and we're finding grants, and we're pulling things in for a lot of our main thoroughfares, but that doesn't touch their neighborhood roads. So we really need to make sure that that communication is continuous, and we get it out to them that if we don't find an, oh, avenue to get into neighborhoods and really put some money into fixing these roads, it's gonna negative every homeowner that's in that neighborhood. So I just wanted to throw that in, because that's something when they call me, people will, will literally say, "I never thought about it that way." And I went, well, we need to, 'cause I, I don't remember the exact numbers, but I, I wanna say, Daryl, you might, or Richard might remember, but I think the initiative was one cent on every ten dollars spent? Something like that, or, or ten cents on every ten dollar, it was, it was somewhere in there, but that's costing the homeowners much, much more when they're looking at selling their homes. So, we just need to keep that in front of the public eye and people realize that that's going on, and it's.
And as Todd said, as time goes on, especially because we're at that point, you know, a roadway, if you look at a bell curve on how a roadway starts, and then how it ends at the end of its life, uh, at about fifteen years into that life, that, that line drops off very quickly, especially if you haven't done proper maintenance, which unfortunately, because of the roadways and the funding, uh, and a lot of way, again, the way the roads were built, we didn't do proper maintenance 'cause there was no funding or personnel to do it. Uh, so again, when you don't maintain a road, when you don't preserve a road, you know, if we just redid Old Publa, like I said, last year, if we were gonna do something well to preserve that road, three years from now, I'd do a slurry seal on it. That's how I would preserve that roadway to last the way it looks like right now, twenty-five or thirty years. It won't happen, because we don't have the funding for a maintenance program like that. So that road sooner or later, ten years in, uh, will probably start to crack and fail, and we will lose a lot of the life of what that roadway should be, because we just don't have the funding to take care of it the way we should. And that's just one road, one, a half a mile of a hundred and eight miles of roadway throughout the city. So, uh, we are, we are at a critical, a critical point, uh, in the city's infrastructure right now, where we are going to see, and we are seeing now, especially with the weather we've been getting, it just accelerates it, that deterioration, it just falls apart. And with, with the crew that I have, uh, I, I can't keep up with it anymore. We're seeing the My Fountain request just, just fill up on a weekly basis, where we'll, the guys are out there working overtime and trying to get done what they can, uh, and we'll, we'll clear four or five digouts that we have to do, and seven or eight come in two days later. Uh, so we're, we are quickly fighting a losing battle right now. So, and it's gonna affect us in the wintertime. You know, some of these roadways, they'll get so bad in the wintertime that we won't be able to plow them, 'cause if I run a plow down them, I'll absolutely destroy them. Uh, so we probably won't plow some of the streets this year, just because of that. So it's, it's, it's gonna get bad, unfortunately.
Ms. Duncan?
At one point, I had went on a website, um, dealing with Colorado, and it did, um, it talked about the amount of money that it costs to fix the roads, and it did have, uh, Fountain and how much it costs, you know, you, you talked about how much per, uh, per inch or a mile, or it costs to fix a road. Is it possible for us to do, and I don't know, uh, some type of Excel spreadsheet or something and put on our page and say, "How much does it cost to fix my road?" I know some people are tangible, visible, maybe they'll get it that, um, you know, "I live on Cross Creek, and this, it's gonna cost."
I have that.
Okay.
Uh, I have it, don't have it for the entire city, uh, but I definitely, uh, last year, I put together, uh, a complete spreadsheet for every street in Cross Creek and every street in Heritage subdivision, so I do have those numbers. Now again, that's two years old, so add fifteen percent to it, uh, based on today's construction costs. Um, so it's gonna continue to go up and up. Um, but yeah, I can definitely, that data, that data I can provide you. Um, you know, the others, other, other streets in the city.
If we had something, um, that they could see tangible, so.
And the one, the one thing that's gonna be great too is we are having a meeting, uh, City Council approved last year, uh, the funding for a pavement management survey throughout the city. Uh, we are knee-deep into that right now, and we are looking at, uh, getting presentations from two finalists. Uh, we did go out for RFP for that, and we have two finalists. We'll start interviews this Thursday, this Thursday on the first one, next week on the other one. So we're hoping to get that program running here and have an answer to you, hopefully by the end of the year. That will, that will provide a complete analysis to every paved lane mile in the city on the condition of it, what it's gonna cost to fix, uh, best practices on where we should spend the money based on what we have right now funding-wise. Uh, it'll, it'll give us, we're, we're mandating or including, uh, GPR, ground penetrating radar, so we'll get a closer view, and that'll give me more, and more information and more data to be able to provide you a ta- a price on what it's gonna cost. Without knowing what that road is built in, it's hard to give a price on what it's gonna cost to fix, 'cause I need to know how thick it is and what's underneath of it, how it was built. So once that data comes in, it will really provide the city and the citizens a, a really good view of exactly, "Here's your street, here's where it sits condition-wise," and then I can provide data on what it would take to fix it.
Right, even if we picked a neighborhood to put in our utility insert that we, you know, "How much does it cost to fix my neighborhood?"
Absolutely. Yeah, I like that.
That'd be a great visual.
All right.
Thanks, Bob.
All right, thank you very much.
Tell you what, you do so much with so little, I can't thank you enough. Mr. Evans?
I have nothing else, sir.
Mr. Johnson? Chief Maxon?
I was just gonna say, in reference to our fireworks, uh, we are staying with our fireworks ban, and that on July the fourth, we will be out in force, fire chief, police chief, police commander, all the staff will be out there just enforcing the, the ordinance and keeping everybody safe.
Thank you, Chief. I gotta say, I'm a little disappointed with the county's, uh, actually very disappointed with the county's turn. Yeah, very. Yeah, they've already changed theirs and decided that no ban is okay, and I mean.
Are they letting them sell again?
Yeah, and within forty-eight hours of saying that they banned, they changed their mind because they saw, I think, tax money. Yeah. Chief Ever?
That, that level of pressure, uh, once that change happened, you know, was significant. You know, James has been feeling it, you know, we felt it, I've seen it pop up on social media, so, you know, just to manage everyone's expectations, there's gonna be fireworks now, uh, in the City of Fountain. Um, you know, we'll, we'll deal with our stance, and we'll deal with common sense, and we'll go out and, you know, if there's a family doing sparklers and ground, you know, ground flares, and they're having a good time, uh, you know, we're generally gonna be okay with that. You know, what we're gonna look at, this'll be all, all-hands deck operation, is, uh, you know, all the aerials, all the bottle rockets, all the Roman candles, the stuff that, you know, it, people should be scared of, uh, we'll address those appropriately. So, our intent after Fourth of July is to give you a report on some of that enforcement action, so you have that, 'cause I'm sure you'll hear from people, both on the good side and the bad side, and we just wanna provide you with that information, okay? Um, last thing for me is I, I just wanna recognize Troy Johnson, uh, the lawyer, as much as it pains me to recognize a lawyer. Right, uh, Troy's been down in my office, and, and this is nothing bad, it's nothing internal to the police department or HR stuff, it's just, um, he's trying to run a police department in the current political environment and dealing with lawyers, and, uh, the stuff, very stuff we talked to today. Troy's been down there, uh, the last two days, uh, like a soldier, we spent about fifteen hours together, uh, just trying to do what's right for our city, protect our cops, and do the right thing, and I just wanna thank Troy for that. Uh, Troy's really stepped up, he's been to a lot of our, uh, ComStat meetings, he's going on a ride-along. I'm sending him into the breach with the bulletproof vest, so pray for him. Uh, he, yeah, I, I'm gonna start him on a daytime shift, so, yeah, I think we'll ease him into it, I hope, but, you know, that doesn't seem really matter anymore, but I just wanna give Troy a shout-out and tell him thank you.
Awesome. Mr. Trope?
Additional, Mayor Potem, thank you.
All right, you allowing anything from my team? Awesome. Ms. Houghlin? Ms. Duncan?
I just would like to say, you know, the Fourth is coming up, and I encourage everyone to be safe.
I'd like to apologize for being late.
Well, it's nice to see you here. Ms. Propagate?
I got nothing else tonight.
All right, Ms. Estes?
I wanna agree with, uh, Councilmember Duncan. Have a wonderful Fourth of July, remember what we're celebrating, the birth of this country and the freedoms that we have.
Ms. Thompson?
Yeah, I would just like to go back to the single-hauler thing for a second. I would just like to thank every citizen, uh, who contributed their thoughts and ideas to that process. I think we kinda maybe glossed over a little bit quick, but, uh, there are people who are passionate, really passionate about it, and, um, they took the time to write us. Um, some of them really, really well-thought-out and detailed, uh, letters in whichever position they took, and I, I really appreciate that. What I do hope, though, is that we can have a lot more conversations like this without the name-calling, uh, without, um, saying that council members are on the take, staff is on the take. Um, citizens come to us an idea, that's how we grow as a community. We, we listen to their idea, and we investigate it, we have conversations about it, we have discussions, we do research. Um, you know, I mean, shoot, there's a lot of stuff in society that's come out of discussions, and so I hope if people have ideas, or they really are passionate about supporting this idea or not, continue with the communication. I mean, it's really what's gonna, gonna make it work. Um, and it doesn't matter what idea you come up with, you know? Um, we have some great things that got added to our parks in the last couple of years that came out of a citizen focus group, right? Um, probably, I, simple ideas we never would've thought of, expanding the splash pad by four or five feet so the kids, some of the kids that don't enjoy the water in their face all the time can still sit in there and be part of it. Came out of a citizen idea from a parent, you know, um, putting, uh, 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 cement ramp over there so mom can get out of her wheelchair and go to see her son's baseball game for the first time. Came out of a citizen's suggestion. These are the discussions we need to have as a community to solve our problems, our issues, and make us the hometown that people wanna live in. And don't shut it down by going out and calling people's names and accusing them of being on the take. Be open, okay? Not every idea's a good idea, but not every idea's a bad idea either. So come in, be respectful, talk to us. We, we all got elected because we all had ideas on how we wanted to see our city improved. Our staff is here committed to working for a lot less money than they could work other places because they see the vision of this community, and they see the flavor that brought them here. We have Daryl Couch back there working hours on a prayer garden in our community, and, and getting that going. It's, it's another citizen idea that came to our community, and I think it's gonna be great. People can go there and meditate and pray, whatever they wanna do, and, and maybe bring some calming effect here. So please, bring us the ideas, write us, email us, just be polite. Okay, I'm done.
No, how do you say, how do you say, uh, in nearly, in nearly eight years, uh, being on various boards, I have seen people spend twenty-five minutes to say, "I agree with what you just said." So I'll just say it very simply, "I agree with what you just said." And thank you very much for, for vocalizing that. I've got nothing further, and, uh, looks like we have no executive sessions tonight, that being the case. I wanna whack this thing again and adjourn this meeting.